Welcome, we'll bring the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their republic, which is ours. My nation, under God, and as a whole, we are in a just, fair, and
Thank you all for coming, I am holding the report, welcome, Sheriff King is active, just so you know. So please be, bear with me. So welcome to anybody in there now?
No.
Um, anyone can make a motion to, um, adopt today's agenda?
Actually, the adoption agenda.
Can I have a second?
On paper? In the poll? Motion? You do it in a minute, sir. Anyone make a motion to adopt tonight's Monday, May 15th?
Yeah, I would make the motion to adopt. Yes. Thank you, now we'll say.
On paper? On the polls? Motion.
Um, if you don't mind, before we go to the, uh, where we, or the road report, just for people that don't know, um, that Mark Stetfield passed away yesterday and, um, I don't know all the arrangements yet, but Mark did a lot for the town and a lot for the village. So I think as it, as we hear, you know, what the arrangements are, I think the town and village should participate in some way.
What happens to his appointments? Do they box the town manager? Or what happens to his appointments to the, well, to town manager, especially if it's one that you're already kind of doing actually as well?
We are both the animal control officer, um, so yeah, I've, I've notified the Vermont State Police about my county sheriff's department, uh, that he's no longer with us to direct any of those inquiries to me. Um, some, sometimes they come to me, sometimes they come to Mark, um.
That was the role he had.
Yep, he, I mean, he did a lot of flowers on Main Street, he took care of the flowers.
Thank you.
Anyone want to answer the road report?
Okay, so who can answer the last of the road reports, Joel's here?
Let's try to get through it quick. Uh, we graded Phil Hollow, I'm not going to go through dates, if somebody has a question, I'll probably answer that. Graded Phil Hollow and we added material chloridated as normal. We graded Lewis Road, added a very significant amount of material to that chloride as well. The beavers had plugged the culvert in Hillside, I feel like I went through this part before.
It was late at night or early in the morning or something?
Yeah, it was, and we did Blissville Road brush cutting. Yeah, okay, so, let's say, we completed ditching on White Road. We had to replace one twelve inch culvert for a driveway that's completely done. Uh, we did the retaining wall on the Lewis Road Bridge at Ward Road, it's labeled Vermont Culvert Bridge. It's, it's right by the Ward Road and Lewis Road intersection. Um, that was eroding right there at the bridge, so we had to continue out the wing wall with a couple, with a few waste blocks. And, uh, that's all done and submitted to Agency Natural Resources for review or whatever. We graded Ward Road, Walker Road, Hanon Road. The grader broke down at one point on Hanon Road with a wind rail in the middle of the road, we got it up and running, took a few hours, but it delayed us. And I think that kind of turned it into a later day than it was supposed to have been, but when you have a wind rail, you really know the option of leaving that for an entire evening. We had a tree come down on one forty. It was kind of windy, uh, Polton Fire was also dispatched for that, and we went out to relieve them so that they could come back and we could finish that up and clean up anything that we had to clean up as far as the tree goes once Green Mountain Power gave us, go ahead. We also checked roots because it was windy and we figured where there's one, usually there's another, so we just quickly scanned over the roots and called it a day, that was a Saturday or Sunday, I'm not sure. Beavers plugged the culvert again on Hillside Road, I think that's finally two, uh, I think they're done with that for a little while, we'll say. I spot graded Hampshire Hollow Road, Highland Gray, Pond Hill and Pond Hill Ranch Road. In one day, uh, just to kind of pacify them all to buy some time until we can get back and, and do it properly. Uh, you know, it was okay for the time being, but anyways. The guys also simultaneously started setting up the excavator on Morse Hollow Road, uh, for anyone that doesn't know, we're going to pave that road this year. So we go through and we clean the brush back and everything so that when we go to do their asphalt and put their, raise their dump truck bodies, they're not taking down trees and mixing leaves in with the fresh black top and whatnot.
And that had a lot of upheaval, so you guys hit it with the plow, that's why people are wondering why they have to be paved.
Yeah, yeah, so we chose Morse Hollow because that was doing a lot of damage, where it was potentially going to rip a wing or, you know, blow hydraulic line due to all the restraint. Um, the road was just awful, you couldn't go down it over the winter without slamming a piece of asphalt that had broke off or one of the bridge abutments or, or whatever, so that's going to be all elsewhere away before next winter.
So nothing new on Morse Hollow, he, he not going to go down further? He's just going to be?
Well, for brush? So we did some brush last year, we, we cut some brush last year on Morse Hollow, we did a little ditching and stuff as well. Could use a, a touch up, I'm sure, and we'll get there.
But, but the pavement's not going to go any?
No, no, it'll be just the pre-existing asphalt, wouldn't, you know. We had green up day, we didn't stay for a full day, it was semi-quiet, so we, we left around noon or one, I believe. We finished the following day, Monday, we, or, um, the following Monday, we went back to the transfer station, finished our cleanup, got it, got the, the transfer station all presentable. Filled in where Dan had been discussing before, at one of the previous meetings about how where they put the leaf pile and everything was sinking down, well, we dressed that all up so that the ground is all nice and leveled through there and everything. Also, that same day, we graded Hillside Road to the Fenton Road intersection and back, as we had previously graded from, from Fenton out to the north end. After that, I was off for a couple days and the guys continued to go out and grade, they graded Phil Hollow Road, they graded Town Hill Road. We, I graded Hampshire Hollow, when I came back one day, didn't like the way it looked, went back out the next day, tore it back up again, then got it to lay down to the point where I was much happier with it. And right as we went to chloride at the, the six we are with, whole load of chloride on, broke down right at the intersection of, fortunately on the edge, where we were able to nurse it to the edge of of Hampshire Hollow for safe passing. Um, and that turned us into an eight thirty PM night, which we were supposed to leave at four. Um, you know, a few of the guys, a reasonable number stayed to, you know, get it fixed, we had to make a run to West Rowland and go get a part and everything and slap that in, and so anyways, that, that got, that got done and completed and, uh, I think Hampshire Hollow maybe sure will shed some light, is looking a little bit better now, hopefully. We also added a pretty significant amount of material to that road. And we, I feel like we can still add more. Uh, we'll get there, but we need to get everything under control first and then we'll go around and kind of try to dress it up the best as possible.
These are pot holes are coming, because the pot holes are breaking.
Dick finished, we all went out last Thursday to Morse Hollow. And, uh, Dick kept going with the excavator and the other three of us were on the ground and trimming everything that he can do with our pole saw and cleaning that up, blowing the road off. Just trying to, you know, make that look as nice as possible. And, uh, Dick finished that up within a couple hours this morning, we'll go back there and just kind of trim. Where, where we go through that excavator and the brush cutting head, it leaves a lot of splintering and, and chewing look and it just, it, it looks pretty atrocious in some areas.
No.
So we tried to go back with a chainsaw or a pole saw and clean it up so it looks, you know, just more aesthetically pleasing anyways. So we'll just go back, we'll touch that up. Also today, Kevin went out and degraded and did Endless Brook Road and Dayton Hill Road, we got that all done, we added some material to both of those roads as well and got those chlorided. And, um, we'll give you a little foresight tomorrow, where, or it's our intention currently, this can change. Um, so don't hold us to it, but it's our intention to go out to one forty with the excavator and the cutting head tomorrow and go do the rock walls, trim some brush on the rock walls and whatnot, I guess somebody had been asking about doing that. So we're, we're going to try to tidy that up. And, uh, and we're going to finish out the week by doing some brush cutting in places where it's really overgrown up to the road and and it forces cars to drive into the middle of the road. Which is clearly unsafe for obvious reasons. And then, next week, it's our intention, uh, to go up to Bird's Eye and, uh, add some material and clean that up, we also have at least one culvert that needs to be changed up there. And, uh, then we're going to add material to it and hopefully, hopefully, when we go to check it next year, we won't have to add materials. Maybe we will, maybe we won't, but we shouldn't have to go up there and cut a bunch of brush, at least for a few more years and we're done with it this year, so.
Yeah, the new stone together, it would definitely last quite a while.
Yeah.
Much better.
Crusher run limestone, yeah.
Much, much better.
Outstanding stuff for the road.
Does it look like you have enough that you're going to have enough for what you're doing? With that?
We can keep having it all then. Uh, I'm kind of slowing down until fiscal year resets and trying to only do what I absolutely have to do just to make sure that we get through. We did get four Q done, so that's inspectable and, and, uh, road, road good. We just have a windshield waiting on Thursday, we put on the windshield, then it'll get kicked back to get inspected and, and we're good to go with that.
So Paul, how do you feel with budgets, Joe, on spying this fancy stone?
Um, as, as Joel stated, as long as we're, um, conscious of the budget and the order, I think we're, we're in good shape. You also did, you didn't mention that you did put some material in Evergreen Road as well.
Yeah, we did, I, I was off that day, I'm not actually sure without going back and looking how many loads the guys did, I believe they each did one or two loads, so we didn't get a lot out there, but, but they did do that and I'm, I also believe that they brought the York rake out to just kind of dress it up, usually we would go out and grade it as we're adding material or, or within a day or two of adding material, so that it does pack down and you don't lose those fines and that, that fresh material. I don't know, I don't believe I'm forgetting anything significant. Give you guys kind of a, a brief idea of what we've done and what we're intending on doing, but like I said, when it comes to our future intentions, that, that can change every one phone call, so.
Does anybody have any questions for Joel? Good job. Thank the boys. Workers. Uh, moving on to town managers.
Can I ask a question? It's Mary Sue Reed. Um, thanks Joe for, for all, for all the hard work on Hampshire Hollow Road, it looks really good, but when I was out walking, I noticed that, um, in some sections of Hampshire Hollow Road, uh, material has been pushed into the ditches. And I was wondering, um, if you guys are going to come and, you know, pull that back out or just, just clear the ditches somehow? Because I'm just afraid that there's, might be standing water on the road in case we get a torrential rain.
Yeah, so the reason for, for clearing that between the ditch and the road is because the edges were actually higher than the road. And without blowing the budget out of the water, that's about the only feasible option I had. Um, we can go back with the excavator and pull that material out, truck it away, that'll, that'll certainly be cheaper than building the road up six inches. From start, from start to finish, and I, I understand it doesn't look the greatest where it didn't roll over the actual berms entirely. But it's a necessary thing to do to get the water off the road so we don't have these potholes and we don't have to go up. The grader holds like eighty gallons of fuel in one road you burn through. You can easily burn through half of that tank. So it, it's definitely cheaper to go back and do a little dressing up um, than it is to be constantly going back and, and regrading because you got potholes because the water couldn't clear the edge of the road. So yeah, we will, we will be trying to dress that up and, uh, fix some of our ditches on multiple different roads, it won't actually just be, uh, Hampshire Hollow. There's a, there's a few that need, you know, a few places and then there's some that need to make extensive work as well. Uh, we just got to figure out how we're going to work that all in and, and get everything accomplished for the year we need to do before winter again.
Yeah, yeah, my, my concern, um, you know, not more the cosmetic stuff, but if there's any standing water and then we might have issues with mosquitoes. So, um, you know, I could let you guys know if I see, you know, any standing water in any of the ditches because again, you know, they, if it's, if the ditch is blocked, it can't get to the drain pipe and drain into the, most of the ditches there drain into, pipes drain into the fields. So that's, that's, that's what my concern was, is that there'd be standing water.
If there's anywhere where I rolled the sod over into the ditch line by a culvert, it definitely, I definitely looked at those to make sure that it did not block the entrance or the outlet of a culvert. And, uh, there's some places on Hampshire Hollow even before I did flop some of that sod over where you can see it hasn't been ditched in this, I don't know, a significant amount of time, I'm not going to give you timeframes, I really don't know, but it, at least a few years. Um, and, and it does need to be dressed up and make sure that, that the slope is, the pitch is correct for continuous water flow to avoid that standing water, so with that in mind, that was also part of the reason why I flopped that sod into it, knowing that we, we need to do something with ditches there.
Okay, great. Absolutely, thanks so much for your help, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
I did forget one thing, because I didn't have it right now. We were able, I, I'd been looking into getting another tank for our chloride, right now we're, we only had the capability of storing, uh, we have one three thousand gallon bulk tank. And Innovative Solutions, where we get our chloride from, reached back and said, I just got you a free three thousand gallon tank if you can go to Rutland City and pick it up, so we got that, it's all settled and we did that this morning as well. So we can now get a full truckload of five thousand gallons and not have to worry about borrowing somebody's tank or borrowing the village's storage tank or whatever to leave that nine, nine hundred gallons sitting on a truck for four days until we get back. Anyways, I just wanted to throw that in there because it's nice to hear about when you get stuff for free, so, especially something that saves a few grand.
Yeah, that's nice.
It's yellow, right?
It's a big yellow one.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it says, uh, magic minus zero on it, you can probably read it from the road as you drive by, we're pretty sure it says magic minus zero because it, it, it's of zero temperatures, it's still going to be in liquid form instead of frozen, so. Anyways, that's it.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, town managers report.
Okay, so I, I just have a few things, given that we had a meeting on, um, this past Monday. Uh, Nisha and I mailed out, um, every year we do the reminder, uh, that, that final tax payment is due May thirty first. This year, um, we mailed, we, we just mailed them out this afternoon, three hundred and five reminders. The reason why we do that is mean, is mean mostly for the, the people that think they, they qualified for a discount but didn't. And then they come in upset that I send them, you know, that they're delinquent forty, fifty, sixty bucks. Um, so, uh, we did that, um, but there's also, there's some, a lot of people actually that we, who don't make any payment until May thirty first. We started the, uh, last year with the auditor, we had asked if we could start sooner so that we're not towards the time when, when I'm generating the town report, waiting for the auditor to finish, um, so we started supplying the auditor with, um, information already for, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit. So hopefully that, um, um, is more efficient, uh, last year we asked to do it, but we got lost in their shuffle, so we're staying on top of it this year that we're not, as I said, waiting until the last minute to finalize the audit. Um, as part of that, because I know in the past, um, folks had queried about the fact that the auditor, at, at least during probably the COVID years, it was all done through internet and they never came here, so we're going to, um, see if we can get the auditor here and maybe even the auditor to a select board meeting to go over the audit, so that questions can be answered directly from the auditor as opposed to coming through me, to them, back to you. Um, we did solicit, uh, some different quotes from different auditors and, um, some of those quotes are quite a bit higher than what we're paying now for an auditor, so we're, we're sticking with what we got for now. I discussed with Sarah the merger question and, um, she is putting together, uh, what they call an RFP, which is a request for a proposal, uh, to send out bids for, um, consultants to, that do these kind of things and consult different towns, I'm thinking that Tom Johnson did one recently. I think Sarah's discussed that one with this board. Um, we're also going to put together a notice, uh, because if you remember the vote for the town and the village included, uh, setting up committees for both the village and the town, so I think we need to advertise, we're looking to start a committee and field some people who may be interested in the topic and willing to assist. Um, so we're going to put that together. You may recall, we have the, that brick grant for the, for the, um, wood study down by the Trestle Bridge, um, I've, uh, engaged an engineering firm to put an RFP so we can put that out to quote, um, for a bid, because I'm certainly an engineer, so I wanted to have an engineer's assistance with that.
An engineer's hard to find, it seems like everybody's waiting for engineers or the like.
Well, I, I mean, I think yes and no, I, I mean, in the, the village works with, has been working with the same engineering firm for most of their projects for thirty, probably thirty plus years at least. And, uh, there's one engineer that works closely with the Potley Meadowway Natural Resource Conservation District that I've done a couple of projects with that firm. Um, he's actually helping, um, his firm is helping me with the Trestle Bridge well, or, or excuse me, RFP, and he is working with me as part of the, the East Potley Gorge Bridge, there was a couple, uh, landowners that we had to discuss, um, the water issues with them and he's, he's helped me put together, helped the town put together, uh, um, a proposal and now he's, um, what, what's the word I'm looking for now, he's, uh, expecting it to make sure what he, what he, what the quote, or excuse me, what the proposal was whether or not it's going to work with what he proposed, so, um, they were supposed to be out on the field last week doing some survey work as part of that. So, I don't know, I, you know, there's that Whistler Road project that we discussed, I, I've been waiting for an engineer on that one for some time, um, I was supposed to get some referrals, but I haven't gotten that, um, because I know that one person has been waiting several years to get that project repaired, and it was repaired some time ago, but the repair is failing, so I, I, and I told the guys on the highway department, I want an engineer to, to design that one and so that we can do it once and do it final, you know, um. So I don't know, in my, in my experience, it depends on what the project is, whether or not it's hard to get an engineer.
Yeah, you've had very good success with with the company that you've had these thirty years.
That the village uses, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've done a lot of projects, um, with them, quite a few and, and the village has a lot of projects in the, in the works right now that they're assisting us with.
Um.
No, I, I think, I think the village, a lot of the time, a lot of the projects on the, like in the, on the town level, particularly the highway projects, a lot of them have always been treated as this is a common sense, uh, fix, um. You know, many of the culvert projects and, and the, the bridge project that Joel was discussing earlier, those are pursuant, those are done pursuant to, in our, um, uh, permit requirements. So, you know, a lot of times you have the state engineer that's designing it and telling you, this is what you need to do. Um, and then he, he comes and, um, inspects it and, and, you know, tells us, oh, you're doing it the correct way, or no, this is what I meant, or, uh, in fact, the, 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 um, the large culvert project that we had on, um, York Street Extension that was done by Phil Scotts, that was designed by the state engineer and he oversaw it and said, yeah, you're doing it right, or no, you got to change this. Um, I don't know how I got into that kind of a, but, um, so, yeah, so a lot of it was more, at, at least on the town level, we're doing what the, what the state engineer tells us to do, um. But there's some, there's some large projects in the, in the town that are going to have to happen that, you know, sooner rather than later, one being that Whistler Road retaining wall. There's a couple spots on one forty that are, that are, um, that are failing, the bank is failing, and those are going to, and we had state engineers look at the, the one on one forty a couple times and you get three engineers and two of them are like, well, this is what I would do, and one of them was like, well, I don't know if that's going to work. But you know the ones I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully through later, over road, somebody can just wait and start formulate a five, ten year, whatever plan we got to do.
Good, so different. So different. Have you looked at Thuncliff?
Which one?
Thuncliff.
Thuncliff, oh yeah, yeah.
Yeah, asking, it's getting tough.
Yeah. The reason why clips in the name.
And a lot of smoke. Anyway, no visit, has gone in the late, so.
Um, the other thing, one other thing I was going to mention, um, we, uh, Nisha has done all the, um, allocations this year, typically, um, for members of the public, so, sometimes the allocation say to like the, to the rescue squad, we do it on a biannual basis. Um, but most of the allocations, we wait till the end of the fiscal year and then do the allocation, um, i.e. the, you know, the Potley Town Band or any of those other allocations that you see in the budget. Um, so all of those allocations have been completed, um, and mailed out. Um, one thing I, that Joel did not mention is, uh, two things that Joel didn't mention is we have a meeting with, um, the art, uh, Stephanie Burke from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Is it tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow, for our next grants and aid, uh, project. Um, which we've been awarded funds for, but now we have to identify the project that we're going to apply those funds for. And then I just got the award letter for the next fiscal year for how much, um, grants and aid awarded us. Um, and the board may recall maybe not, and I, I won't blame you for not recalling, because there's a lot of stuff. Um, that in previous years, the Regional Planning Commission helped us, uh, identify projects. Um, helped us, uh, um, document projects and helped us, uh, report the projects and, uh, seek the reimbursement. We're not doing that anymore, but Stephanie Burke from the Planning Commission has agreed to sort of baby step us, which she did on our last one that we finished last year. Um, she kind of like, okay, here's what you got to do to fill out the, the report and, um, which is all on a tablet and it's a bunch of questions, as if you can imagine, if you're, you're bureaucratic questions that the RPC used to do for us. questions. If you can imagine your, your bureaucratic questions that the RPC used to do for us, so, but no, we have to do it. But, um, between Joel, myself and Sarah and, and with some guidance from, from the RPC, I think we'll be fine.
Why did they quit, quit doing?
It was a matter of funding. The state used to fund them to do it, as I understand it. And they said, we're not gonna fund you to do this anymore. And you might, it's, it's kinda, um, you'll see it in bits and pieces where the state is like, oh, the towns can do that themselves. Um, so.
Work out with the smaller towns like us.
Yeah. In fact, when, when I had to do the, um, ARPA reporting, um, VLCT has a person that, uh, that assists. And I, I reached out to her and said, can you, you know, can you help me? It's one of those things where you do it once a year and they're like, I did this again?
Right, yeah.
So, so she sent me like, well, I've got, here's the, here's the instruction. And she sent me the link and I looked at the link and I emailed her and said, can you, can you just give me half an hour of your time? Because the instructions that fell out of four page form is a hundred and sixty pages, thereabouts. And, you know, she said in all the wis- wisdom at the federal level, you know, there's cities that have a staff of two hundred people and let me assign this to this person. That's all they do is.
Yeah.
Where you have small town America, like much of America is, uh, you know, and she helped, you know, took me, took her and I over the phone, half an hour to do it as opposed to me trying to poke through the hundred something pages of instructions. Um, so there, there's, I have a note here that there is some questions about the highway garage, houses, the houses going on, on the highway garage. And I think there's still some, uh, in appetite, we certainly saw one that we had the town to trail Zoom meetings, that there's some appetite in the public to explore different locations for the highway garage. Um, so we, we sort of like, let's, let's just do this in a methodical way and, um, not to diminish the importance of a new garage, but let's make sure we, we put it in the right place and at the right size and do it the right way one time instead of regretting. Um, you know, Sarah, I talked with Sarah this, this afternoon or this morning about it and she says that, that town to trails report is gonna be a couple more months out, I think is what she told me. And in that they'll make some recommendations. Um, so it's not that it's, it's not that it's forgotten, it's just that we're gotta be methodical about it. Um.
Um, so far, nobody's found any land that would work.
Yeah, no, I, I, not the, no, I'm racking my brain and
Right.
I mean, the location is, is, is a key. You want something that's sort of centrally located, right? I mean,
Yeah.
You don't wanna be like all the way north Polley or south Polley or whatever, east Polley or. Um.
We measured all the buildings too, so it's, yeah.
Well, finding the land seemed a little bit late to the party there. The large, la- la- all the large land. You know, I was going to approach suburban, but I've been told numerous times that we're never still done.
Um, as it has the building, it also has the materials that are all around it. So, which is hard to be in. You can't really be in two places. I'm gonna get my truck here, but then I gotta go all the way far to get the materials. So that's really hard too.
Right, so I have a whole
Yes.
Ton of land up the, off of 140 out in East Polley, off to the side, you know?
Okay.
Um,
Where?
And that's, if you're headed toward Milton Springs, it'd be off your right hand side out, out, you know, as you get out toward like Hampshire and Hollow and stuff. But I think the river's not really that far. And I don't know, you know, I don't think the land's for sale or anything you're saying, you know, that's a, it's a nice flat area and whatever, like you said, yeah, centralized location.
So that's.
They're all that sand shed, that's the only nice building that you guys have right now. Yeah.
So I just wanted to mention it just so people know it's, oh, they're ignoring that thing again, which is not the case by any means. Um.
You guys have done a really nice job cleaning it up. So it's, at least it's presentable and you can walk through it without being
Yeah, it was named, you know, we wanted it to look good for one. If we can't make our own stuff look good, then how, who expects us to go out and do a good job in their area? You know, if ours looks like crap, then geez, you really want these guys coming up there to do it? And in preparation for whether we rebuild in that same location or we move, we don't, we don't want a million things to do when that day does come and, you know, let's get as much done ahead of time as possible.
Uh, the one other thing I was gonna mention is, I keep, I know I keep saying the one other thing I was gonna mention. I feel like chills when I do that. I, where's that paper?
Yeah.
Um, we, we have a meeting with the state, uh, for, mm, May thirtieth, um, I think May thirtieth? For the diesel emissions.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah.
So thirty, yeah, thirty.
For the diesel emissions, um, reduction grant whereby we, I think I talked to the board about it, but we hadn't set a date yet. Whereby we dis- uh, disengaged, uh, the old Baco, um,
Mm-hmm.
They, they witnessed the destruction.
Excuse me. Yeah, it's for clunkings.
Um, I think that's all I have at the moment.
We still have our bridge meeting on the twelfth, June twelfth, but Monday.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. I know there was some discussion on whether or not we should try to move to the firehouse. Um, I've already, I've already, uh, noticed the, a bunch of the neighbors that the meeting is here. And that's why I encourage people to use the Zoom, which we have. Um, we have to that end, there's a, uh, the state has a meeting, uh, before that. I think it's in the beginning of June, which they've invited me to whereby they're meeting some of the, um, uh, immediately affected, uh, landowners for that project. I.e. the ones that were, uh, either gonna have to do an easement or, uh, most especially probably, but not, the only thing that's important that where the temporary bridge may go. So they're gonna have an in-person meeting with those folks. They've already had some conversation with some of the players and I think that's great. Um.
Will that be a public meeting or just for those?
Just for those, those folks, yeah. Um, but, uh, I was talking with the state engineer last week and you know, if anyone's had the opportunity to look at the, the, um, what the, what the scope of work looks like, it's, they call it the alternative bridge presentation, I think, but there's really, because of the historic nature of the bridge, there's really, that's the alternative. Um.
So they're not gonna do, do the whole bridge? New things, like you said.
I mean, just, this is just a teaser. So you can, you'll have to come to the meeting on June twelfth.
Right.
Um, but Sarah, uh, if she hasn't already, she was gonna put the, um, the notice in it, there's links in there where you can look at the study.
Okay.
But yeah, there, that's, that's basically because of the, the historic, they have to save the historic structure. Um.
Damn, those historic bridges.
Um.
One more thing.
Uh, yeah. I've got a little story. There was one person, this was a while back, a few months ago. Said, what do you do, actually do? You don't seem to do anything. Like, oh, really? Uh.
You manage.
That's all I can say at the moment.
Thanks, good. You put up on a couple of things and made questions about such good. We don't have any questions for Paul?
Oh, I do, one other thing, I do, not, I'm not being funny. Um, I, I do know, uh, that, um, a couple of the board members had separately, um, uh, had discussions with the Malazos in reference to the question that was brought up at the last meeting. Um, uh, the Little League, um, and, and some of the questions that were, that were, uh, that arose from the public. Um, and I do know that there's indication that the Malazos are gonna get us some information to hopefully, um, shed some light on some of those questions and answer some of those questions. I can't speak for what it's gonna say, but, uh, it, it, it's in the works. Um, so stay tuned if people are still wondering about that and, and whether or not there's gonna be answers forthcoming.
It's really only our role is that we allocate money to them. Other than that, we really have nothing to do with.
Absolutely, right.
I do know there's been some bear sightings around.
Yes. My name is of the Polley Road.
One lady's called and the bear, she has a freezer in her garage and the bear's figured out how to get in the freezer a couple of times.
Yeah, I heard a couple there come away up onto the, the porch, yeah.
The lady that called me said that the bear broke into her, broke the door into her garage. First day, got the garbage. Broke the door down, the second day, got into the freezer and then apparently she had, she thought she had secured the door, but came back the third day, broke the door down like, this time she said it was completely destroyed and got into the freezer again. And she spoke with the game warden and, and he, according to her, he advised her, get a bullhorn and make a welcome mat out of nails.
Make noise out of.
But I've heard, I've heard, uh, it's not in one area either.
It's a lot of out there, a lot of camera, the others a lot of, yeah, big, big ones too. I was surprised how big that one was. Yeah, like, wow, that's a good sized bear. Yeah, they say make a lot of racket, like I know you've been.
That's why I said get the bullhorn, I guess.
Bullhorn or get a pot and can.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've never heard of that, nails and bats.
I don't like electric fences either. You have bees that's, that keeps them out of it.
But they got into, my neighbors, they got into herpes and she had electric fence around it.
It's great, right?
Behind their house, yeah. They're hungry and they don't get into just about everything.
Challenge.
Yeah. We're not gonna get that.
That's all I have.
Hey, sure. Yeah, last, last, any questions for Paul?
There were two, there were two mentions of requests for accountability during the last meeting. Um, is there anybody else that we need to notify that they might be getting questioned as well? Like, and I'm new to the conversation. It just, we're talking about Dan and then we're talking about the Little League thing and I, my guess is good faith on everybody's part, because that's just what I operate from. And then what will I know? Is there anybody else that needs like, hey, you might want to get your papers in order because accountability rushes. I'm curving. It just kinda squared away or is that like, those are the only two and that's everybody, after that, it's it?
Well, it's the, the whole bottle thing was that's, it's been brought up a couple of times over the years. Um, and it's, I, I think the board has always operated on what you just said, um, Jonathan, is good faith. Um, you know, this, and this is so, sort of the, I mean, it sounds sort of, um, I don't know what word, rude or whatever the word is I'm looking for, like, the easy solution is don't let them collect bottles.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and not, not to be like rude or, uh, blind or blase about it. Um, other than that, I'm, hey, give me suggestions on how, how the public thinks the bottle guy who's doing it seemingly altruistically for different organizations in the town is not taking a bag for himself, not say, I'm not suggesting that at all, but that's kind of what, what I'm saying is.
To clarify my perspective, Dan walked through all the people that he helped one time, talking with them, and it just was like, this dude's playing us that he's doing a great job, because otherwise he's doing it for very little money and he's self announced really worthy cause. And I was just thinking, it'd be a shame to get blindsided by something like that, find out after the fact and then like, well, no, I don't. I write it down on pencil on a legal pad, because that's all, he, he, my point is simply the good faith that, that, and, and people do. Yeah, I guess I just wanted to point out that I think he's a good faith.
In your organization, if you're up there for the women's club or for the junior class or whatever, you're up there the day when the bottles are being collected too. So you have an idea what's going on that part. So you hope that, I mean, it does a lot of good for a lot of groups.
Oh, yeah.
But the questions they asked were legitimate. It was like, okay, when no one's up there, what happens to them? Do they stay or whatever? So that's something that we're looking into getting an answer to that. Cause they're like, okay, they stay up and they roll over to the next group.
Yeah.
So if I didn't use a mag boot in the next day, you have a fundraiser, then they go into your, your fundraiser.
And, and the amount of money is just good. It has just been increased dramatically. There's water bottles and now pices. Um, a bunch of bottles got, got trained up to ten, fifteen cents.
Really?
Wine bottles. Yeah, they just passed it.
Oh.
So you could see a, you could see a fifty percent increase.
I knew during COVID, we had a lot more bottles.
Yeah. The state, uh, is helping the bottle store.
That's good.
Um, yeah, Dan's extremely honest person.
And the other case is, um, we did talk to him about, it's really not, um, a select board issue, but we do allocate money for them. So we will get answers. Just, it's nice for them because in good faith that, yeah, what they're doing. So it's nice just to update people. Yeah, so, good. Any other questions? Yes.
Uh, two things. And the first thing kind of bouncing off that, um, I had asked before about if there were any procedures for who gets to have bottle drives, because that can easily be biased, like, what if somebody wanted to go up and do a Black Lives Matter bottle drive? Would that be acceptable? I mean, it feels sometimes like it could just be whoever is the one that's in charge there is the one that gets to decide which causes are worthy. So I don't think that asking for transparency is ever a bad thing. Um, whether it's like, yeah, I know you're saying like, yeah, I don't write it down, but maybe that should be something that the town does to be able to, you know, be able to tell what its fundraising capacity is through these, like, I just don't think it hurts to be more clear about, you know, you know, what's going on there. So that was just my, my take on that. And then for the second part about accountability, which I had planned to mention this anyway, um, especially based off of what Paul was seeing with, um, the bridge study. So I've been getting the reports, um, and it was the Polley Bridge number seven replacement project from five eighteen. Um, it's that email where they have things in completion. Basically, if you go to that webpage and then you go to the reports, you can see that the final, um, report is from twenty, twenty twenty-one, it's from July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And it just kind of, I think, brings into question, like, especially when, like, that's how it's listed in their database right there on the Vermont Transportation, um, website, where, you know, when, uh, the public was basically being asked to come in and weigh in on the bridge, like, kind of, what's, what's the point if you already had the plans built up two, two years ago? So, um, I think it makes sense for people to ask questions about things, because sometimes things like that don't really make sense, like, why you're using final plans that were approved on the, you know, on the plan for July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. There's no way that we all could have weighed in, because we didn't even have the opportunity to have discussions by that point. And those things were, if you look into the earlier ones, were from studies from twenty seventeen or twenty nineteen. So there's sort of just a facade of accountability and transparency that, um, it's worth looking into.
I mean, if your bridge number seven is the East Polley Gorge Bridge and
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't wanna, um, you know, rehash everything that went, that happened, but there were, there was many public meetings where the public had input on that bridge. Um, maybe there were some, uh, people I think that were, um, maybe misunderstood the meeting that was, that happened at the firehouse, whenever that was. I think it was August or September, maybe. Um, whereby that, that meeting was just a, was intended to be an introduction of the liaison, consultant liaison between the state and the public. That meeting was never intended to be a, let's open up the discussion on what the bridge is gonna be and what it's gonna look like and how many lanes it's gonna be. But there were some people at that meeting that felt that was an opportunity to, um, sort of renegotiate a decision that had already been made. Um, so I don't know if, if that is what you're referring to when you see that there's a report from July of twenty twenty-one of a final report. And the previous reports were earwears facades of transparency, I think is what you said.
Um, yeah, because you can't really go and there's, if, say, if the point of the meetings was to actually have a public discussion, there's not really a point in having the public discussion if the public's input, no matter what it is, isn't going to be, isn't gonna matter because the plan has already been adopted. But clearly, for what you're saying, it had already been.
There'd been several meetings, several meetings discussing the bridge. Um, and again, that last meeting that they had in the firehouse where Beth, Bethany Oprendak interviews herself, that was never a, let's talk about what the bridge is gonna look like. That was here, this is who I am. That was never a, let's talk about what the bridge is gonna look like. That was here, this is who I am, this is how you get ahold of me. This is how we, this is how we see the project going this month, this month, this month, if everything goes well. Um, but some people felt that was an opportunity to renegotiate what, um, was discussed in meetings was, uh, uh, you know, different positions were, um, offered by members of public, by the state, that this board, different configuration, uh, because there were different members, uh, had lots of discussions about it and took public input. I know there was a feeling that the public was ignored, because there was a a certain faction that wanted it one way. Um, but, you know, I think this board, uh, made the decision they made based on what they thought was the best for the entire Polley community. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know if that really.
Sort of. I mean, I only ask because they, Bethany first sent me an email on July thirteenth, um, you know, asking because of what my business was and asking about clients. And then, you know, for the, when they mentioned that meeting, it says it's a public information meeting for Polley Vermont Bridge Number Seven Off Raw Road, Monday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty two. This will be a hybrid meeting with participants invited to attend in person. The purpose of this project is to go over and pro, go over the project scope and schedule and what the public can expect during the construction phase. And I'm just, as I mentioned, it's just, I think that they're inviting public discourse when a plan has already been adopted seems kind of pointless to me. And I think that might be why members of the public felt that they had the ability to weigh in and contribute to the discussion, because they were being asked to come to a meeting, or at least that's what I, my, you know, what my thought was. But now that you're saying that there are so many other meetings, it's clear that that might be where that misunderstanding occurred.
Yeah, in fact, um.
They were, they were there because, um, it wa, we thought, which was a nice thing, that the state was gonna give them step by step, like, this is what you can expect, instead of hearing it from us, hearing directly from the state, like, they're gonna come in, this is what they're gonna do first, then this is what they're gonna do next. But you have an outline of what it's gonna look like. So we were happy that it came from the state level, not just from us telling you, but the state says, this is what it looks like. We're gonna take this and this out, then we're gonna close up shop and then we're gonna open up. So then you would hear what it's gonna look like in the timeframe as much as they could. So it was hearing it from their voice and not just from us telling you and from them. So we thought it was better to have it right from the state so that you would get the information and be able to, and that's why they keep sending out the updates, because they're really nice up to you and everybody on what's happening. So that's why we try to be as transparent as possible, getting it right from the state, what that's what they're doing.
It sounds like, it sounds like, even from the way that you described it, that that although it wasn't explicit, that it was an information presentation rather than a request for public comment. I've not gotten any of these emails before, so this is a question worn in ignorance. Is there any sort of designation to the request for comment type of meetings, so that it's clearly we are soliciting input at this one, we're not just presenting information out of, out of, you, you, does that make sense? Like, would there be a way, or is that just, it's explained as the meeting is is kind of unwrapped?
There would be a meeting by meeting. Be quite.
Okay.
Um, I'd have to look at, just using this, the bridge down here as an example, I'd have to look at the wording of, I, I, I think that, I mean, this one, as I stated earlier, the one down here is a little bit more, um, almost like a facade, like you said, because, because of the historic nature of this bridge, because the other bridge that's already underway, there was like three alternatives, maybe even more, I can't remember. And it was sort of like, hey, what does people think? And they, I think they even had those clicker things, like, who's gonna, who thinks this is a good idea, you know, even those meetings, right?
No, but I looked at that, um, that presentation.
Yeah. Um, but I mean, you've been to those type of meetings. They're like, here's a clicker. What does everyone vote for? I'm pretty sure that that one, but this one is sort of like, here's the alternate, here's it, here it is. This is what we have to do. Um, the one that, the thing that is a little outlier there is I'm interested in what they're gonna do about the sidewalk, um, cause that is an issue, um.
Most of the controversy on these polls was one lane or two lane. That was the major controversy was one lane or two lane. There wasn't a lot of other chat about much, but yeah. For this one, that's not an issue, because it's, right? Yeah. So great. Does anybody else have any other questions? Anybody answer? Any questions? Nobody answered? Perfect.
No, no. No chat.
No chat.
Sorry, being sensitive about that dog warden position. Is that something that you would probably appoint to put an appointment process out, or do you generally pick from folks that are already town employees or town government? Like, like, would, is there a good reason, let's say, to like, put out something to the neighborhood watch or whatever? Like, does anybody love dogs and want to help control the wild dog?
Well, that's, that's sort of way, that's sort of way, Mark, um, volunteered for that position, cause he loved animals.
Yeah, dogs.
Um.
So would you be interested in having like people solicit their, or like tell you about their interests?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Um.
Great, cause I'm a honorary member and I'm happy to have someone else.
Yes, she's, she's really my assistant. She's my, I don't, yeah, she's my posts on social media, because she knows how to do that stuff, so.
There's been a lot of talk on the neighborhood law actually over the last couple of years about dogs.
About dogs.
And it seems like to have it go from two people doing it to just one, um, seems like that could go sour pretty quickly, so.
Well, the thing, the thing I should remind, now that I'm on my, my public platform here, of the public is, is if you just register your dogs, it is so much easier to be the animal control officer, cause then I just look at the tag and I can call you. Hey, we got your dog. I can't tell you how many, how much, how many hours I've wasted and Cheryl's wasted. Not, you know, I'm not wasted, but spent unnecessarily if the dog had just been registered with tags on it.
And we had to take them all the way to Pittsburgh, so we get them, we don't hear about it, we can't keep them overnight and we're in the car overnight. You have to take them all the way there and then the owner calls, like, oh, okay, now you gotta go over there. So it's really kind of with cats and dogs. It's kind of like.
So you have to, if you drop it off in Pittsburgh, you have to go back and get it and bring it?
No.
We send out, if the owner comes.
From what you started to say.
Well, we have to come back. We have to drop it off.
I mean, I used to.
That's the owner at that point.
I used to give, I usually diligently try to find the owner during the day. I have on occasions, much to my wife's chagrin, cat, dogs and cats on my property. Um, we have one not a very good facility that my first dog that I put out down there got out. I don't know how it got out, but it got out. Uh, so, yeah, I usually try my very hardest so that I don't have to tell someone, oh, yeah, I said, I brought your dog to Pittsburgh at eleven o'clock this morning.
It's hard to keep them in. We've been pretty lucky once we put them on social media, that someone knows something like, found this dog, so it looks like, oh, it's so, so, like, okay, when, when you can come pick it up.
I usually keep, I always keep them here for the day. Tie it to my desk.
I'm a dog on, on, I just. Do you feel?
Yeah, a lot.
A lot.
I would, if you ask the fur, there's, I mean, I don't know the number, but there's a lot. Um.
Especially the ones in town. I mean, I'm on Hampshire Hollow Road, my dogs don't go anywhere in town and they're registered, but a lot of the ones downtown, you look and either they don't put their registration tags on it or they're not registered. There's a lot of them. Cats are like.
Are people not registering them because they find it cheap cost prohibitive? I don't have a dog, so I'm only positive. So maybe, but I mean, there's, it's a very, very low income town, so there could be a lot of people that love it.
They also have to have their shots at the end, so if you can't register your dog, it doesn't necessarily be a shot, which is, they should have, if you're gonna have a dog.
That's responsible ownership.
Right, but I mean, if that's what the question, like, if people feel like it's too high barrier to do it, like, what's more important? Do we want the information about who owns the dog? Or do we want to have information about dogs that are registered? I'm not, I'm not saying you could get more information.
Maybe running around the town.
Cause they're gonna have, but they're gonna have the dogs anyway, and either they can be registered.
Okay, but if they have dog, if they have a dog and a dog needs to be watched and fed and all this stuff, if they don't have fourteen bucks, they probably shouldn't have a dog.
My thought was going as well.
First of all, I don't want a dog running around town with rabies.
Oh, but.
That's the most important thing.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that these dogs are here anyway, and if there are barriers for them getting registered, whether it's cost or shots or whatever, it might make sense to make it so that people can just register their dogs anyway, just so we know who the dogs belong to. I'm not saying that we shouldn't be, like, we should get still doing all the things. I just am like, wondering how can we make it easier so more people register their dogs?
It's not fair to those people that do, I mean, my dogs don't really need to be registered, they don't come in town, like, keep them whatever, but I do register just in case something should happen. So I think it's definitely gonna have an animal.
The most important thing when you're talking about dogs is the rabies.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know how many times I could, I've either had to quarantine a dog personally, myself, because the dog wasn't vaccinated and bit somebody. Or how many times I've had to deal with people that have been bitten by a dog and they, and the dog is not, um, vaccinated.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, I'm not like, just arguing with the need for that.
Can I ask you a couple of questions related to this that might be informative and sorry to whoever opened this can of worms, cause I bet this wasn't on the agenda? Um, I don't know what the fourteen dollars does and I would pay it anyways, but I'd be even keener to pay it if I understood where that went. And that's, I spoke as a new person who doesn't understand, so it's not a like a challenge, it's more of along the lines to kind of see your point. So maybe we start with, if we haven't already done, which, and 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 if the folks that are not paying the registration are reachable, cause sometimes people just don't do things, cause that's their personality, they're contrarians and they don't want to get done with it. At the same time.
Anxiety.
Sure, 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 sure. Yeah, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate hearing your perspective when it comes up to this, cause you're always going to back for folks that I can't say, so, like, so kind of a bit of an ableist, you know, like, everything's working great for me, so I don't necessarily think that way. So having that thought be brought to the, to the conversation is incredibly valuable. As somebody who.
I can, I can answer your questions.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah. So first of all, um, registering dogs is a state level required by law.
Sure.
Thing. Uh, the revenue that's generated by the town clerk's office goes into the general fund to help offset the tax liability of, of the real property taxes. Frankly, that's, that's what it is. It's when this board sets the tax rate, they look at a couple of things. They look at, um, the grandest value for the entire town. And then they look at, well, how much taxes do we need to raise? And then they look at things like, how much revenue do we project? So that, let's say, let's fundamentally just say, we need to raise, raise a hundred thousand dollars in taxes, but we think we're gonna get whatever it is, five thousand dollars from dog registration. We think we're gonna get twenty thousand dollars for recording fees when you record slang records. So then you take that twenty five thousand dollars and say, oh, now we only have to raise seventy five thousand dollars in taxes. So that's what it's, that's what it's used for in this town. I don't know if other towns.
And add to that, your salary is being spent when you're dealing with stuff like this and offset that expense, that makes complete sense that the dog owners would have some contribution into that. Um, is there a safe harbor, like, or a midway between? I've, I've seen the, the signs show up, like, it's due on this date. Is there like a six month in, safe harbor? Hey, we know you didn't already do this and you know you didn't already.
Yeah, there is. I don't, I don't know what that date is, so, but.
That's usually pretty good.
But I mean, she, she, from, from my understanding, she will, she'll go through a list. These are who registered their dogs last year. Look, haven't come in. She'll summon, she'll summon a reminder, which costs the town money.
But what about all the people that don't even ever register their dogs? Those are the ones that I'm concerned about, like, the people don't let them out of the house, because they're not registered and maybe they're not vaccinated. But then what happens when they do get out and then you can't find them, because you don't know where they belong, perhaps?
Well, I mean,
Able to get more.
You know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna get, break it down to brass tacks, the animal control officer has the authority to seize a dog. Now, does, does the animal control officer, A, have the capacity to seize every dog that's not registered in the town? B, house the dogs, C, transport the dogs? It's, it's a, it's a very, uh, kind of, kind of harkening back to Mark's question about the, um, you know, the Ritten Regional Planet Commission and the MRGP.
Right.
It's just another thing the state of Vermont has along that they expect, you know, small town America to enforce.
The best had a lot of safety issues. I mean, if you're gonna have a pet and you don't, maybe you don't want them to biting or hurting or getting a number of dogs that didn't have it and bit other dogs.
It's for you to feed. If you have a dog, this is not an old fee in the system.
Can we change it maybe to a sliding scale based off of income? Because I totally get that it might be cost prohibitive, even fourteen bucks, man, that can be a lot of money in your budget. On the other hand, some people are kind of like hiding their dogs, because it's a bite risk or
Right.
they don't provide vaccinations for their animals, which is nuts.
Talk to your legislators, if that's, if that's what.
I would near touch that, because I like this thing that would set us up, cause it's at the sliding scale, who's this sliding scale, who's this and that? I mean, I'm gonna say, I, I have to pay fourteen dollars and someone, Jonathan doesn't, because what? I make ten, yeah, I mean, like, that's a hard nature justice.
You don't make money, but you chose to get a dog, which is unnecessary.
Yeah, I love my dog, so they're both registered, they have to date them, so I'm like, well, maybe you have to.
You're gonna bring in the dogs.
Is, this came up because he was talking about the position of dog catcher and a concern was, is this, are we a solution in, in search of a problem with our conversation right now? In other words, is this a big enough thing that it needs a change in perspective?
What you're saying, one, these, like, the problem is that people won't register their dogs. So, yeah, so that's why I'm generating some potential solutions to figure out, how can we know who the dogs are, so that you don't have to go all the way to Pittsburgh to bring the dogs there, whereas like, if we are.
It's called responsible owners.
Right.
That's what, that's all it is.
Alex, do you want to become?
All right. Let, let's, let's, let's for another meeting, I think we, yeah, yeah, we'll take it into consideration. We'll certainly talk to maybe the Betsy, but, um, we are still looking for a dog warden to help Paul maybe. So if anyone is interested.
It's called animal control officer, which also includes horses, pigs, chickens, cats, cows.
Living things that are people, basically.
I have dealt with rats.
There's a lot of those.
And white rap and someone swore, this guy be someone's cat, so. So the guy, the guy at the shelf, he told me that thing was so mean, that everyone at work.
Okay, that goes fast. You have a book to call, you're done. So, yeah. Okay. Any other, local select board business?
No.
No, Ritten Regional Planet Commission?
No.
That was here. Couple of comments, other than dog. Okay. Thank you. We don't have executive session.
No.
No, for next time. Um, I have a motion to adopt, um, to sign the board orders.
About the board orders?
Yes.
Uh-uh. Your board, okay. Sure, yeah. We should sign those. I'm making a motion, I'm making a motion to, to sign.
At the second time? Okay. All those here? Opposed? Sign the board orders. Okay, anything else?
No.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you all for coming. Anyone want to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?
All right.
You're not opposed? Don't be it. Adjourn.
Thank you, everybody.